Good evening. Welcome to the January 16th, 2025 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. Everyone would stand with us, please. I'll ask our Commissioner Chaplain Romell McMurray.
Let us pray. Most gracious and all wise God, we stand before you tonight to say thank you. We thank you for allowing us to see another year. We thank you for our health and our strength. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for always making a way out of no way. And we thank you for being who you are. Lord, if we haven't been telling you thank you, as we should be, we tell you thank you right now. Lord, whatever decisions that we make as a commission body, I ask that we always seek you first in everything that we do. I ask that you light our paths and give us clarity on how you want us to live and govern. Remind us that we are leaders, and leaders are to care about the success of everyone around us. When you bring out the best in us, then we know that we have the responsibility to bring out the best in others. I ask that you protect and cover all individuals that keeps us safe, whether it's our military, first responders, frontline workers. Continue to heal our land with peace, dignity, and empathy for all mankind. May 2025 be a year of restoration and unity for our cities, our county, our state, and for the United States of America. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. This time we'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the roll. Lisa?
Commissioner Oliver?
Present.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P?
Here.
Commissioner Davison?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Commissioner Kush?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner McMurray?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Mr. Serrano?
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you. This time I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch for the reading and approval of our December meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have read those, the minutes, and find them to be appropriate and in order. Motion to dispense with the reading and approve them as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our December meeting minutes. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item E, becoming a habit, a really good habit. I'll call on our Budget Chairman, Robert P., for the reading of a resolution in honor of Oakland High School and 6A State Champions. Commissioner?
These guys keep getting it right, and hopefully I can this time. I'm gonna ask, first of all, Commissioner Harris, who's also adjacent to Oakland, to join me if you would, and also Commissioner Phillips, if you'd like to join me or stand there, and also invite our Oakland football team and coaches to come up. At any rate, we have a resolution. There you go. Come on up here, guys. While they're coming, I wanna mention something. Of course, this is fourth time, so I oughta be getting a little better at doing this. So I'm gonna ask these guys to pronounce their own names when it comes time to recognize them. But if you think about the quality of athletes that we have in this county, it's amazing, you know, what these guys have done. I mean, when you have teams like Riverdale, Smyrna, Blackman, Rockville, it goes on and on. You know, the hard thing is getting out of this region to get to the state. And, you know, they actually made a mistake one time, or I thought it was a good deal. They split it where we could actually have Oakland in one conference and Riverdale was in the other conference. I think that lasted once because Oakland and Riverdale, of course, won their conferences. Anyway, I'm awful proud of these folks here. So I'm gonna go ahead and start reading our resolution. And when I get to the coaches, I'd like for y'all to raise your hand. And then also with the players, what I'm gonna do is just, we're gonna start on one end, I want you to raise your hand, and I do the same thing when I'm chairing budget. You come up here to talk or be seen, you're gonna tell me your name and what you do. So that's what I'd like to do with you guys. And having a name like P. to pronounce, a lot of people will murder that one, and I don't wanna murder any else's names. So anyway, a resolution of recognition for the 2024 Oakland High School 6A State Champions. Whereas on December 7th, 2024, the Oakland Patriots High School Football Team won the 6A Blue Cross Bowl State Championship, defeating the Houston Mustangs in a rematch of last year's title game. This achievement marks the fourth state title in five years. And whereas with 14 wins and only one loss this season, the 2024 Oakland Patriots also won the 2024 Region 3-6A Championship. And whereas the Oakland Patriots dominated the season under head coach Kevin Creasy, varsity staff Josh Connor, and I want you guys raising your hands, the ones that are here, Tyler Edie, Scott Thomas, Eric Vito, Jason Sarge, Vonz Henderson, Matt Duncan, David Watson, Ryan Knotts, Justin Roberts, Marcus Price, and Troy Must- 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 Strongly, excuse me, and freshman staff Brett Roberts, Alex Roberts, Russell Clark. And whereas the team members are, and guys, I want you to start on that end down there, raise your hand, tell me your name, and you commissioners that are sitting there, you can loan them your mic if you'd like to.
My name is Isaiah Kirk, and I play offensive lineman at Oakland High School.
My name is Smart Hill, I play running back and returner.
Vanwa Henderson, I play receiver, DB at Oakland High School.
My name is Chase Barney, I'm an athlete, 2025, at Oakland High School.
My name is Quinn Norfolk, I play D-line and O-line at Oakland High School.
My name is Keeson Stewart, and I play center at Oakland High School.
My name is Preston Rose, and I play O-line for Oakland.
My name is Craig Tuck, and I play running back and DB at Oakland High School.
My name is Darian Adams, I play offensive line.
My name is Cameron Sanders, and I play nose guard for Oakland High School.
My name is Imari Young Woods, and I play safety at Oakland High School.
My name is Caleb Ellison, I play linebacker at Oakland High School.
My name is Kyle Creasy, and I play quarterback at Oakland High School.
Alexa Clevenger, and I'm a water manager.
My name is Mariah White, and I'm a football manager.
Renia White, and I was also football manager.
My name is Coach Creasy. I just rolled in here a little bit late, so I'll do my 10 push-ups. Still trying to catch my breath, I had to park at the tattoo parlor. Maybe we can address that. But I did wanna say thank you to all the commissioners. I know we were here just a couple years ago, it's good to see alumni and definitely alumni of our quarterback club over there, Commissioner Oliver, and of course, Commissioner P., and all those that are responsible for getting us up here. And I just wanna tell you how proud of not just these guys, but these coaches and these young ladies. Thank you very much. I appreciate the invite. Commissioner Harris?
We appreciate y'all, guys. You're outstanding and such a good example to our county. But thank you all. This is your chance, though. I thought he might be interested, and since he's not, these guys are needing championship rings, and those are pretty pricey. But anybody that would like to donate can see the principal out there at Oakland, John Marshall, or the coaches. But I'd appreciate anybody that can help these guys out on being able to afford these rings. But thank you.
Congratulations to Oakland once again. Let me just make a quick comment. I, as most of you know, I have a retirement slash vacation home in Townsend, Tennessee, which is next door to Maryville, Tennessee. My wife took me to a concert at Maryville College, which is next door to Maryville High School, back in December, I'm sorry, back in November. And the three men sitting in front of me, which was pretty much my age, were not watching the concert, but were watching the football game that Maryville was playing that night. And their comments were, this is a warm-up for Oakland High School. All I could do to not say something. Maryville has a following that is second to none except Oakland High School. Once again, congratulations. We're honored that you bestowed upon Rutherford County. Item F, it's public comments. We've had four individuals sign up. The first is Barbara Donnell, and her topic is the school bus contract. While Ms. Donnell is coming up, I'll remind you that you have three minutes, and the countdown starts.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Donnell. I am one of the officers with the Rutherford County Contractors Organization. We represent 70% of the Rutherford County bus contractors. I am here tonight to ask for your help. We desperately need a raise in order to stay in business. We are asking for 34.8%, a 34.8% raise in the first year, and the Rutherford County Board of Education giving us a stipend for the liability insurance. Over the final three years of our contract, we're asking for a 15% raise each year. We have been receiving pennies on the dollars for the last several years, and those pennies have finally caught up with us. We know the amount we are asking for is a lot of money, but this is what is needed in order for us to stay in business and continue to do what we are passionate about, which is transporting the children of Rutherford County to and from school safely. Remember, the Rutherford County bus contractors are only 5% of the budget. According to the RFP that the Transportation Department sent out, we are still under, we are still under the bid that was turned in by first student. Their bid was $10,500 per month, and they only offered 25 buses. I have given you a copy of a pay stub from 10 years ago and one from August of 2024. As you can see, our pay has increased just $1,800 over a 10-year period, which equals to about a dollar a day. And this doesn't include our mileage that has went from 50 miles per day to 60. The cost of living has went up 32.27%, and inflation has went up 21.2% over the last 10 years. If you add the cost of living and the inflation rate together, that's a 59% increase. We received a 14% raise over the past four years, and we are still behind 35%. The cost of buses have went up 50%, along with labor costs, parts, maintenance, and drivers. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We really appreciate all of your help and support in this matter to keep our bus contractors in business. Thank you.
Next is Ashley Sugar, and her topic is Plan Rutherford.
My name is Ashley Sugar, and I serve as the CEO of the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors. Our organization represents over 2,500 real estate professionals dedicated to serving the middle Tennessee area. At the last meeting, the Neighborhood Alliance alleged that MTA was running a misinformation campaign through our Protect Rutherford program. This claim could not be further from the truth. I'd be happy to meet with anyone and discuss the details of our marketing efforts and clarify any misconceptions. The goal of the Protect Rutherford campaign has always been to raise awareness and invite input from the residents of Rutherford County and to allow you to hear concerns from your constituents. MTA has worked diligently to engage as an active voice in the comprehensive growth process planning. Unfortunately, despite multiple effects, attempts, we have not been able to achieve the level of collaboration we've had hoped for. Our campaign resulted in 2,147 emails sent by concerned Rutherford County residents expressing their thoughts about the draft plan. To put this in perspective, that's nearly three times the amount that was received from the initial Plan Rutherford survey. I want to entify, entify, oh, emphasize that these emails represent feedback from residents of the county, not just Realtors. As we move forward, MTA remains committed to being a collaborator, collaborator, a stakeholder, and a partner for this county. Our sure goal is to ensure that Rutherford County continues to be amazing, an amazing place to live, work, and thrive. On January 27th, the Planning Commission will hold a work session to discuss Plan Rutherford. We are eager to participate in this process and contribute to a productive dialogue about the questions and concerns raised by the community. We have been informed that the way to do so is by submitting questions to the committee and by Doug by mid next week, and we fully intend to do so. These questions reflect the genuine concerns and inquiries of Rutherford County residents who deserve transparency and clarity about the draft plan. We expect these questions to be answered publicly during the January 27th meeting to every commissioner here tonight. We ask for your transparency and commitment to ensuring this process is inclusive and thorough. Please provide answers and allow the community to engage in a meaningful way with the draft plan. Thank you for your willingness to hear us out. We do not see ourselves as adversaries, but as stakeholders and collaborators working toward the same goal. We trust this commission will do the right thing and provide the transparency and answers that over 2,000 engaged residents have asked for. Thank you.
Next is Cynthia Allen. Her topic is also Plan Rutherford.
My name is Cynthia Allen, and I know many of you, so thank you, and congratulations on Oakland for a great win. I've been a citizen over 35 years, and I reside in District 15. I also represent the Stone River Watershed Association, and I hope to follow up with an email on this and be a part of that planning next week, too. We've been watching this plan, especially through the watershed, since 2018, and I'm really appreciative for the efforts that have gone into it, but I do feel like it falls short in several key areas, and I know I've spoken to many of you about that. We're just specifically asking for revisions to be made at this time because we don't think that the document adequately represents the critical infrastructure that our county is gonna face. And I wanna spell some of that out to you quickly in my three minutes, especially regarding our water, our wastewater, our solid waste, the schools, and our emergency response, particularly for our fires. We know that this land that we have around the county also has increased flooding, so we think that those are all, you know, pretty serious concerns that we need to make sure are spelled out in much more detail in this plan. How many of you, let me just ask you, you don't have to raise your hands, but you can if you want, how many of you realize that we have difficulty reaching the fire in that whole outskirts of our county for fire response? So, you know, we're looking, just to pause in my talk, we're seeing what's happening with California, and how many of you think that that was preventable? At least to some degree on how they mitigated that response? That's why this is so important. We have got to have some of these key elements in this growth plan. That's what it is designed to do, is to help us grow responsibly as a county. Currently, we don't have adequate pressure to hit all of the outside areas of our county for fire response. That's critical, and we're seeing in California how critical that is, you know, to have the pressure that we need and the water availability that we need. Regarding the landfill, we know we're still in the middle of communications on that and what's gonna happen with our solid waste. That's not even hardly spelled out at all in this plan. We know we have adequate drinking water now, but we do know that midway through this plan for that projected growth, we are gonna run out with the current water availability and allocation that we have. How many of you realize that? And that is not spelled out in this draft plan either. Water is essential to every aspect of our community, every single aspect of our community, from businesses to our citizens, to our hospitals, to our students winning our great team games. In addition, many of the surrounding counties have those same issues because water is gonna become more and more restricted in our area, even though it seems like we have a lot of it. I've attended meetings in the fall with many of you and with leaders in this community regarding the water availability. I've spoken directly with people with the Army Corps of Engineers, so I know that some of this stuff has been reported to be accurate. So my question to each one of you is, how come we have not already included this? This plan's been in draft since 2018, and we have left these critical areas, you know, just really fluff and just a blimp in this. It needs to be spelled out more adequately, and in order for us to plan and respond, we have to have well-developed plans. So I don't mean any disrespect, but I think the current plan is just irresponsible, and it doesn't address the challenges that we are gonna face and we know we're gonna face with these projected growth. So I see especially the challenges that are happening in California as a wake-up call for all of us, and I ask that you please revise our final growth plan to adequately address these issues. Thank you.
Last is Laura Clark. Her topic is also Plan Rutherford.
Thank you, Miss, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity. Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Clark. A few months ago, I'd never heard of Plan Rutherford. I kept hearing more and more about it. So a few weeks ago, I started hearing something, some objections to Plan Rutherford in, under the title of Protect Rutherford. So I said, I need to know more about this. So I found the document, and I read it. I read every word, every page, because I wanted to know what it said. As I was reading it, the first thing that came to mind was, wow, somebody put some time and effort into this and thought into this document. And the second thing I said was, this covers pretty much all the areas that I want to see in a community where I want to live. Now, are they final ideas? No, they're draft. They are modifiable, as I understand it, as we go along. But reading Plan Rutherford, there's an irony in those who are objecting under the name Protect Rutherford, because in my mind, it seems like Plan Rutherford will protect Rutherford with some of the ideas that it brings up, with some of the plans, some of the frameworks, some of the guidelines that it wants to put in place. So I am here to ask you, as a resident of Rutherford County, as someone who likes to have a plan, and as someone who loves living in a booming county that everyone wants to move to, but as someone who does not like hodgepodge things happening, willy-nilly building, and someone who likes to see a framework and a clear vision. I think Plan Rutherford offers that. I've heard other comments tonight, and it is good that we're all here with different ideas. There's still time to make revisions, and bottom line is to the commission, I'm asking that you vote yes when it is time to vote on this and support the implementation of Plan Rutherford. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Item G on our agenda is elections and confirmations, and we'll call on our steering vice chair, Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations begin with item one. This is the election of our notaries. Listing of the notaries may be found on your iPads, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I have a motion and a second to elect the list of notaries. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item two, steering would like to confirm the reappointment of Barbara Sutton to the Audit Committee, Audit Committee, as the county citizen member for your term beginning September 2024 through September 2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second for the reappointment of Barbara Sutton to the Audit Committee. Questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item three, steering would like to also confirm the reappointment of Pettis Reed to the Agricultural Advisory Board as a county commissioner. This is a two-year term, January 2025, January 2027. Mr. Chairman, I ask that a member of this commission make that motion.
I have a motion and a second for the reappointment of Pettis Reed to the Agricultural Advisory Board. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item four, steering wishes to confirm the reappointment of Kay Jernigan to the CCRC Board. This is a three-year term. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second for the reappointment of Kay Jernigan to the CCRC Board. Questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. There's one dissent.
Item five, steering also would like to confirm Kayla Howard as the county genealogist. This is a mayor's appointment. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second for Kayla Howard to be appointed genealogist. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item six, we also wish to announce two vacancies for Agricultural Advisory Board, one farm woman, one farm man. These will be a two-year term. Item seven, I would like to announce one Planning Commission vacancy to fill a retiring member's term. The term will end August 2027. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmation.
But I think we've got time for item number H, which is the resolution to approve our consent agenda, and for this, I'll call on our chairman, Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Mayor, there is a request to remove item 10 from the consent agenda, so I move that we approve the consent agenda, save moving item H10 to K10D. I so move.
Item 10 will go under budget?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 10. Questions or comments? Yes, we're going to be on the board. If you would, commissioners, please cast your vote. vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, you may do so now.
For the vote.
Twenty-one, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Six-thirty in time for our public hearings, and for this, we'll call on our planning director, Doug Demossi.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Doug Demossi, county planning director. Just have one rezoning request for your consideration tonight. This is REZ24-023 by Mark Baker. This is for property located at 1248 Twin Oak Drive. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is commercial general for about 4.3 acres. As stated, the applicant would like to rezon this property. According to the letter that was provided by the applicant, which is in your iPads on your agenda packets, the applicant plans to store excess equipment, materials, and vehicles on this property that are not out working on projects. The applicant's employees are going to be the only ones accessing the site. It's not going to have a public face to it. Future plans include repairing the existing shop on the property to protect small tools and other material from inclement weather, and possibly adding an office and parking area for employees. Again, I would call your attention to the letter for additional details. The applicant believed when they purchased the property earlier back in 2024 that it was already zoned commercially. After researching the property, we didn't find any older zoning files on it, but we have seen older aerial photography from the mid-1990s that do show what appeared to be a shop on the property with materials and vehicles also being stored on site. The property also is assessed commercially at the county assessor's office and has been since at least 2002, where it was labeled as Jerry's Auto Repair, so we can understand why he thought what he did when he originally purchased the property. Access, parking, landscaping, performance standards, all of that will have to meet our requirements. The applicant is aware of that. He knows that if this is approved, he'll have to come back with a site plan, and that that'll be taken through the proper channels in order for approval, so he can develop the site in the manner to which he would like to develop it. One person did speak during the public hearing, asking about property values and adding a privacy fence. Staff explained the property, again, would have to comply with our screening and buffering requirements, which could include a landscape screen or a combination of a privacy fence and plantings. There weren't any other concerns expressed during the public hearing. Following that, the planning commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? Questions for staff? At our public hearing. At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ24-023, rezoning for Mark Baker. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. You've got three minutes.
My name is Vanessa Kelly, and I live right behind that section of land that they're talking about in this new subdivision off of Twin Oaks. My back bedroom, I can see his land, well, he's right above me. My concern is, I want to make sure I understand that we're not going to get tax increases, or is it going to devalue our new property? Because I just moved there in a brand-new house two months ago. That is my concern, and I want that to be addressed. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Robert P.
Mr. Chairman, I can understand why this gentleman thought he was zoned commercial since he'd been working there for several years and paying and taxed at commercial rates. So taking that in mind, and not having heard from any of my constituents against this, I'm going to make a motion to approve with the conditions set forth by the planning commission. Having said that, I'll wait on a second, but I do have a comment.
Motion and a second.
Thank you. As far as property values, you know, that'll be assessed by our property assessor. I can't promise you you won't see increases. I can promise you that I'm not planning on doing a tax increase. I cannot control what the property assessor does, however. So I just want to, I want to make that clear. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just an additional comment, if I may. The lady that just spoke, we're not supposed to be answering questions, but you can make your comments. But to answer your question, property taxes will not go up because of this commercial rezoning. It's kind of been used in that for a number, couldn't have zero effect on property values, but affects property values are price of property in Rutherford County right now, and that would probably have a greater impact than anything else. Planning Commission also considers those types of things and public, and more proper to discuss this through the planning commission at that public. Not to ignore you, it's commissioners and planning commissioners.
We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ24-023, rezoning request for Mark Baker. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief announcement, just kind of, I kind of dovetailing along with some of the comments made during the public comment period about the upcoming work session for Plan Rutherford. We are having one after our regular meeting. A regular meeting starts at nine o'clock. Never can tell exactly how long those meetings are going to last, so I can't say it's going to be at a certain time, but it's going to be immediately following that meeting on the 27th, which would be about a week and a half from today on that Monday. As was stated by several folks that were speaking, we are, this is not a dra, or, sorry, this is a draft. It's not a final document. This is not a meeting for a vote. It's a meeting to simply go over the questions that we have been receiving. I'm just going to be honest with you, if we receive a lot of questions, we're probably not going to be able to get to every single one while we're at one work session. There may have to be multiple, so I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. Before any kind of approval is made, there has to be public hearings. Those public hearings have to be advertised 30 days in advance, so I just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. There's not going to be a, like somehow, you know, this gets shoot in somehow. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for public comment on this, so thank you.
I'm sorry, Chairman. Please confirm the start time of that meeting on the 27th, the planning commission meeting.
The planning commission meeting starts at nine.
Nine AM.
Correct. And that's in this room. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach the well?
As Director Demossi has told you, that this Plan Rutherford will be coming up before our planning commission on the 27th. And as chairman of the planning commission, I'm just wanting to make sure that all the commissioners understand, and you are welcome, you're invited to be part of that meeting coming up the 27th at nine o'clock here in this room. And anybody else that would like to? I know there was some suggestion about transparency. We have tried to be as transparent as could be as far as this, this plan has been concerned. We've been now, we're into the third year working on this. I remember back when we were working on our public health and safety buildings, all of you remember how I carried a book with me all the time. Now, for three years, I have been carrying this book with me, and we've spent a lot of time on it. I think one of the speakers tonight has just said the fact, the time we spent on this. We have, and we've covered a lot of things. But I want you to understand, some of the commissioners tonight have asked, when will the opportunity come to vote on this and when will it come before here? I wish I could tell you, we don't know. Because when it goes before the planning commission, we are turning this over to the the planning commission. We're going to take everything that's in here. We're going to take what has been sent to us as questions, concerns, and things of that type, and go through them and see what else should go in here, what shouldn't be in here. In fact, I had a call just the day before yesterday telling me that they did not like this draft, and I had to tell them. I said, you know what? I don't either. And they sort of, act sort of surprised. Said, what do you mean? I said, I have found things that I think we need to change too. And I said, I'm pretty sure the planning commission are going to see things we need to change as well. It's a draft. It says on there, draft for public review. When you do a draft, that's pretty much it. Any of you ever built a house? You have a house plan. The house plan, you go out there and you prepare to build your house, and you go by that plan, then all of a sudden, you say, hey, that doesn't work there. I need to change it. If that doesn't work there, I need to change it. I'm not Moses coming off the hill with the Ten Commandments. This is changeable. In fact, Monday night, as I spoke to the planning commission, I sort of gave them a challenge. I gave them four items to think about. I suggested to them, I said, if you have not read Plan Rutherford through and through, I suggest you do so. I'm giving you homework. Study this. Commissioners, I ask you to do the same thing. I told them four things. I said, Plan Rutherford will be a living document, a living document. Plan Rutherford is intended to be a living document. The plan sets an overall vision while allowing the county flexibility to effectively respond to opportunities and challenges that might emerge over time. A comprehensive plan's outlook is generally considered to be over 20 years into the future. However, the document itself should be updated regularly to stay aligned with the community's expectations for growth. The county recognizes this and will monitor the plan to ensure its effectiveness. By Tennessee code annotated, every municipality is supposed to have a growth plan like this. Around here, they do. City of Murfreesboro has one. They set theirs for 30 years. They've already made changes in it, and it was just done two years ago. We have the capability with this plan that if we see something's not exactly right and needs changing, it can be changed. It's a living plan. It will be committed to fiscal responsibility. It will be a plan, and I think ahead, our county government will be able to anticipate and manage growth in a way that minimizes the burden on our local taxpayers, plus will maintain a quality level of services. Development in the wrong locations can result in expensive proposition for the county as well as municipalities. The plan has no power to determine how much growth will happen. No public policy or community plan has the power to control how much growth will happen in a county. Growth is determined through private markets and individual property rights. Plan Rutherford will help ensure that the county is prepared for growth and to establish tools to allow the county to guide development that results in a mutual benefit for longtime residents and businesses, and for those who are new to the area. The plan does not affect how you can use your property. All the plan does is to identify the desired character of future development and does not strictly limit what can be done with a property. The plan is an advisory document that guides land use development. These are things that we will be looking at, and as I said, we'll give people the opportunity to send this information to us, and it'll be given to the planning commission. We'll start on the 27th. It will not finalize anything on the 27th. There will possibly be two, maybe three other study sessions like this. And then we'll also have a public comment period where people will be able to come forward, just like we do here on our regular meetings. And then they will have the opportunity, as a planning commission, to vote for this one way or the other, up and down, for it to be sent to the county commission. That's the way we've always done these in the past. You already have one of these set up back in 2010, 2011. So I'm just telling you, this is nothing new. This is something that we do, and as I said, your municipalities already have it done on Tennessee code annotated. But I did want to make sure that you, as commissioners, know you're always welcome. We invite you to be there on the 27th, or at least one of the meetings that we'll have in the coming weeks. And we appreciate you being there and putting in your input to us. Thank you for the time.
Item I, unfinished business. I have none. Anyone else? Item K, we're getting ready for our standing committee reports, and first up is item K1, Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, Chairman Robert P. Prepared for that item that we've added to your agenda?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you don't mind, I'll address that first. Item 10, which was removed from the consent agenda, I actually planned on making a comment about anyway, because I'm kind of proud of what we're doing there. I got a call from Chairman Harris, who had been approached for, to donate some money to Stewart's Creek. Stewart's Creek, which a lot of us didn't know, I didn't know at the time, has been invited to participate in the upcoming presidential inauguration. And it's going to cost quite a bit of money, I think around $120,000 that the school is having to raise. And Chairman Harris asked if we could address that, that budget, and maybe make a donation. And that's basically what we did. We didn't have time to advertise it when we found out about it, so we brought it up under other business. And I'll go ahead and, and read this resolution. But to me, it's a great honor for this school, the only school in the state of Tennessee, to be recognized to participate in the presidential inauguration. The odd thing is, my wife graduated from a little high school in Winfield, Iowa, and they are going to participate as the only representative from the state of Iowa. Did that answer your questions about the resolution, or do you have anything else you want to ask before? Please go ahead.
Oliver.
Sir? Yes. Thank you. I had questions, I do, because as a commission, has this commission ever supported any other student activities in our county? I'm just curious about the financial support, especially considering that, it's my understanding that Trip has been paid for. Curious if we've ever, again, any Rutherford County student activities? We just honored a football, our football team that's won numerous championships and asking for donations for championship rings. MTSU, right here in our county, paying into our, you know, revenue here in our county, been to the Grammys like nine times. Have we ever said we wanted to contribute to those students? I'm just curious about the precedent that's being set, especially considering the limited funds that we have, the fact that we're going into budget season, there's questions about the budget, even with what the donations that the school board is talking about doing, considering what the school board is going to ask us for. I'm just curious about the precedent that's being set, considering some of the budget issues that we're having.
I'm not 100% sure that I can recall contribution toward an activity like this. I believe it happened, but I can't specifically recall. Chairman of our Health and Ed Committee, can you? Dr. Sullivan here? It was a little earlier. Runyon, are you here? I'm going to request that you come up and see if you can answer those questions. I guess we need to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Runyon to speak.
Motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
McAdoo, while he's coming up, I can remember us supporting some activities in the past, but I can't remember any specific.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have supported in the past, but as far as a contribution, I don't think we ever gave a contribution. gave a contribution.
My short time as CFO, I haven't seen anything that the commission has actually contributed in a monetary amount for. I did speak with Dr. Sullivan before he had to go, and he said that we did receive today about a $40,000 donation, which put us above or right at where we needed to be for the cost of the trip. So as far as, like I said, answering the question, you know, if there has been any assistance, I'm not aware of it.
Questions for Mr. Onion?
The trip is paid for.
Yes, according to that, it put us right at 140,000 with that donation.
Make this clarification. Are you saying that the 7,500 bucks isn't needed now?
$7,500 is included in that 140,000, so it's probably not needed. But again, I don't know the full exact amount. I was just told it was around $120,000 to go.
Thank you. I know, Commissioner P., I know that there have been honors in the past, but as far as contributions, I can't remember any of them. Like Macy's parades and Rose parades and those kind of things. County contributions going.
Mr. Chairman, I recall one is one school that we, that we supported, the choir to go to Washington, DC. We supported them, but we did not give them any money. We had to get out and raise it. So that's the latest that I can remember.
All right, we need to go back in session, so all of that stuff that we just said.
I can't recall anything either. It seems like there was a building, maybe with the wrestling program, that we came in possession of, and then we turned it over to one of the schools. That's the only thing that comes to mind as far as a direct donation, and that was kind of around the corner, too. Anyway, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. You may vote on it as you see fit. Resolution, whereas the Stewart's Creek High School band will be participating in the inauguration of Donald Trump and is required to raise funds for the trip, and whereas there is a desire to provide $7,500 from the general fund, and therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the funds in the amount of $7,500 be paid to Stewart Creek's High School from the general fund, resolved the 16th day of January 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution in Board of Stewart's Creek High School.
Thank you, Chairman. It might make this easier for everyone if we make an amendment, that if, I don't know, and no commissioners can say for sure, this information just came. Are they including our $7,500 in their total? Brian doesn't know. How about an amendment? If we choose to pass it, what if we?
Let me interrupt. Brian said that it included the 7,500 bucks.
Has it been verified with the school that they do not need this? What we could do is an amendment that if you choose to pass it, we have it, if you choose to vote that way. Or if you find out they are fully funded, we don't pay it. That's probably the most common sense resolution at this point, because that way, if we favor giving them the money, we've passed it, but if they don't need it, we don't. I don't know of another more common sense way. Can we make that amendment to the motion, that if we contact Stewart's Creek High School and the $7,500 is no longer needed to hit their total, we will simply not produce the funds?
That's a motion.
That's, thank you.
Have an amendment? Do you have a second?
You have a second.
Now, discussion on the amendment. Commissioner Gooch.
My concern with the amendment, what if all the donors make that decision? If they're having to leave, I guess, pretty soon, and then we say, well, you know, we're going to withdraw. We got to know how that would happen.
If I may, I can only be concerned about this body. I don't know what they'll do, but I'm just concerned about what we're doing. I don't know what they'll do. So I don't, I don't know how to answer that, Commissioner, I don't. But this should satisfy those that want to contribute should they need it, can vote yes. And if they don't need the funds, we will not be using it. I feel like that's an appropriate balance between everybody.
McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The amendment may be for a good cause, but if we pass that amendment, and I come back in two months and say that Oakland High School won the state championship, and they want to go to the Super Bowl, are we going to contribute money to them? And if we set that precedent tonight, that we support if they don't have enough money, we're going to let them have it? That would be my concern, that if we do something tonight like that, just you remember it in the future.
How about I go make a phone call and find out? And we do the other amendments, and I step out, get a call, find out, and come back. We may need to just withdraw this altogether if they don't need the money and not go through this. Can I go make a phone call? Would that be okay to postpone this vote? Just trying to get a common sense answer to the question. Take that back. I just got a text that said they do not need it. I've been texting like crazy. They do not need, I said, I need to answer now. So I will withdraw my amendment, because we're not going to need to do this. We could just either vote this down or withdraw the first motion. They do not need it. They said, thank you.
Amendment to the motion has been withdrawn. Who did the second?
And the second has been withdrawn.
Second has been withdrawn. We're back to the original motion.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we withdraw, if it's okay with my second.
Yes.
I think this was not put out to do anything but help support the school and endeavor that we're all proud of. I don't care who you voted for for president, getting to march in the inauguration parade is a big deal. It's a big deal for the state, and I'm awful proud of Stewart's Creek for doing that. Having said that, I'll withdraw the motion. Do you withdraw the second? Motion has been withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second has been withdrawn, and that item has once again been. Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of follow up on the comment, it doesn't matter who we voted for. I'm talking about the precedent that we're setting in our county as far as supporting our students in other activities, especially considering we're going into budget season, we're talking about limited budget, we're talking about schools, we're talking about other things that we can do that support students. So it's not about who I voted for, who anybody voted for. Absolutely, it's an honor. It is an honor. And they did a fundraiser, which allowed everyone to be able to contribute. So my only point is the precedent that we're setting to support, rather, we're supporting any other students doing other spectacular and honorable things, and then considering our budget issues that we have. That's my only concern.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman. In lieu of the discussion that we've got on this topic, I just wanted to, if you make a quick request, that we send an invite to these band members for next month to do a proper resolution, to show our gratitude for their talents and their skills to participate in this.
Okay, that item, and that was originally item 10, funds for Stewart's Creek High School inauguration performance from our consent agenda, which has been removed and added to the budget, has been withdrawn. Commissioner, Chairman P.
Item K1A, this has got to do with the budget for body worn cameras, and we had a grant. This is some of that money. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, from the sheriff's office, a decrease in unassigned fund balance, $14,963, an increase in revenue, BWC, other direct federal revenue of $14,963, and increase in expenditures of $29,926 for data processing equipment, resolved the 16th day of January 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion and a second, discussion, questions. This will, of course, be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
For the vote.
21 yes.
Item K1A passes.
Item K1B, this is actually two parts, and this is actually from the road board. One is for bridge construction, and the other is a pay raise increase that they had described earlier. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows, to provide funds to widen the bridge on Rucker Road at Long Creek, a decrease in assigned fund balance of $675,000, and an increase in expenditures in bridge construction of $675,000. And the second part is to provide funds for salary increases based on percentages approved by county commission in December of 2024, a decrease in committed fund balance of $4,910, a decrease in assigned fund balance of $43,005, and a increase of expenditures, and I'm not going to read this whole list, but the total is $47,915, resolved the 16th day of January 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? None for this will also be on the board. Commissioner, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
For the vote, please.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Budget item C is not something that we'll be voting on. This is for your information. We're required by the state to report to the full body legislative body on our debt obligation. I'm going to call on our finance director, Michael Smith, to do that, but I'm also going to ask that he gives the same report that he gave to the budget committee about the bond issuance and possible savings there. Michael.
So as y'all know, recently, we just closed on a refunding issue. We closed the first week of January. And so as part of that, we have to file a report on debt obligation that's before tonight with the state comptoir's office. They have received and accepted that. But I want to point out two good news or two good things about this. One, this refunding by itself, we refunded seven years' worth of bonds. That saved us about a million, a little over a million dollars total, so we were over the course of seven years. So that's some really good news. The second thing is, and if y'all remember this, from December, we're going to end up calling those last three years of the bonds. And so overall, this will reduce our debt service over 10 years by 10 million. We'll end up spending a little over, around 7 million to call those bonds, so we'll save about $3 million over 10 years by doing this, so we're really happy about that. The other good news is both Moody's and S&amp;P reaffirmed our ratings. So Moody's reaffirmed our AAA rating, and S&amp;P reaffirmed our AA+. So that is also really good news for the county.
That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman, our next budget meeting is scheduled for February the 6th.
Thank you, Chairman P. Item K2, Public Safety Committee Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report, but our next meeting will be January the 27th, here in this room at 5:30.
Item K3, Health and Education Committee Chairman Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next meeting will be here, January 28th, at 5:30.
Item K4, Property Management Committee Chairman Alan McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report tonight. Our next meeting will be Thursday, January the 30th, 5:30, in this room.
Thank you, Chairman. Item K5, Public Works and Planning Committee Chairman Anthony Johnson. I miss your jacket, but I like your bow tie. Thank you. Almost a pleasure to see what you're going to be wearing. Go over here to Chairman Dodd and know that you won't be wearing any socks, but we don't know what kind of tie you'll be wearing, so. Like it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I try. Public Works and Planning, next meeting will be Tuesday, February 4th.
Thank you, Chairman. Item K6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee Chairman Craig Harris.
It's very long, so I'm not going to read it, so I'll explain it to you. We have, we have a mineral severance tax, which is for quarries on anything they take out of the earth, and it has not been, it has not been risen for over 40 years. So I have met with some of the lobbyists. I feel very confident that they will be addressing this. They said they will raise this tax for us. It will be revenue coming in. We have not yet had the full numbers yet. It will be negotiated, like y'all know, all bills will. However, it will be sponsored by Representative Charlie Baum for Rutherford County and Senator Shane Reeves for Rutherford County. So all this is saying is that we are behind this bill and want to raise this up from 15 cents to 45 cents. And if y'all want me to read it, anybody, I'll be glad to, but it's long. So anyway, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to increase mineral severance tax. We're open for discussion or questions.
Chairman Phillips.
Piercy.
What is on our iPad state that we get 15 cents now?
Yes.
Raise it 15 cents?
No, sir. Raise it up to 45 cents.
Raise it to 45 cents?
Yes, sir.
So adding?
How much money? Yeah, 30 cents. Yeah.
Not real clear on them.
If you want me to read it, I'll read it.
Just real quick, so this, this resolution will not actually raise our tax here locally yet. What this is going to do is be forwarded to the representatives at the General Assembly, asking them to make amendments to state law that allow us, if we so choose to in the future, to increase the tax up to 45 cents. The county's tax is through a private act, so this also is through a private act. So this also requests that the General Assembly amend our private act in accordance with whatever amendments they're going to make to state law. That's all along winded way of saying, this is asking the state to do something to help us provide an alternative source of revenue to allow us to increase this tax because right now it's capped at 15 cents. And if they do that, this matter would come back before this body for a vote on whether it does in fact want to increase the tax up to 45 cents. And how This is just the first step.
Commissioner Pierce, what it is, is Rutherford County is taking the initiative to ask for our representatives to have a bill to address this problem where this thing has not been, has not been risen for 40 years. And I had introduced this last year, which we unanimously voted on, and the lobbyists had killed it. So I had met with them and they're willing to come to the table and work with us for something. This is what we're asking for. We feel is a respectful ask. Of course, you know how government works and it's, that's going to be with the state. But we're sitting here saying this is what we want, Rutherford County.
Is the stone out of the quarries the only mineral this will affect?
Yes. That's a great question. Yes. For what I know. I know there's some situations going on with some developments where they are selling stuff, but we have not been able to get anything on that yet. So yeah, it's mostly, this is mostly quarries.
The reason I ask, you see multiple developments now working on poor land to develop and they hammer rocks out of the earth and use it versus buying from the quarries. So it looks like we might be missing a point there somewhere. And where else I was going with this, well, I'll ask Nick, is this the only mineral this affects that comes out of the earth?
Yeah. So the state law deals with sand, gravel, sandstone, chert, and limestone that is severed from the ground. That's what the law pertains to.
No liquids of any kind?
It's not, that's not, that is not stated in the law, correct?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
P.
How many years ago did you say that was, this brought up? Forty, what?
Forty years.
My father was the City Commissioner in the 4th District at that time, and he's the one that brought this legislation forward and helped get it passed. And you're right, it's been that long. Now, my understanding of the law, and I've worked with some of our legislative delegates on a question about a quarry or two, but if you, on your property, extract minerals and you take it and sell it, this would apply. If you use it on your own property or some other property that you own, it would not. Now, that's my understanding of the way this Severance Act works. And if I'm not mistaken, Greg Rooks is one of the people that has a hand in deciding whether that severance tax applies or not. And Nick, I'll ask you to verify that.
It is specifically goes to the roads.
Or as an example...
Yes. In FY '23, about half a million dollars a year, give or, give or take 20,000. It varies. We're paid quarterly, just so anybody that knows. So in FY '21, we collected 491,000. FY '22, we collected 541,000. FY '23, we collected 514,000. So about a half a million dollars a year, and it does go directly to our Highway Fund.
Potentially, if we added 30 cents to the 15 cents. It's no million bucks.
Mr. Chairman, and you said it goes to the Highway Board?
It goes into our Highway Fund, Fund 131. It's mandated that it goes in there by the state law and our private act.
Commissioners, we know we have a revenue problem. And property tax is the only thing that we seem to raise and get money. And we know all of y'all are trying to find new revenue streams. This is something. And I think after 40 years, they should be paying more anyway. So I support this 100%.
I can just try to summarize. There seems to be some questionable looks on some commissioners' faces. It really doesn't change our ordinance. All it does is gives us a, don't have to go to that ceiling, but that flexibility to do that if the state would... Other questions or comments? Vote. Want to be on the board for this. So we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for our, to increase our mineral severance tax. Cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
For the vote.
One yes, one no.
Item K-6A passes. Commissioner Harris.
Okay, I want to announce congratulations to Representative Charlie Baum, Representative Brian Terry, State Senator Don White, State Senator Shane Reeves. All were chosen as chairmen today of committees, which is good for our county and the things, in the endeavors we have ahead of us. Also, I wanted to give you an update. There is a real estate transfer fee that is in the works. It is being sponsored by Senate Majority Leader Jack Johnson, and it's being supported by Chairman Pro Tem Pat Marsh of Shebbyville. This would bring in $14 million if it passes, and there's some heavy hitters backing it. So keep your fingers crossed on that. Thank you, sir.
Other business? We're at the end of our agenda. Other business? Yes, sir. Commissioner Goach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under the Budget Committee report, there was a report about the obligation, the debt obligation. And I'm not on budget. I am not good with numbers. Math was never my strong suit. But what Michael Smith eloquently told us sounded pretty positive. He, he paid a bunch of money upfront to save us a bunch of money on the end. It's kind of what I got out of it, right? So congratulations. He also stated that our standards and poor rating is really high again, right? And what's the other one? Moody's is also high, ice you can get. So I think that kind of just passed over us a little bit. I just wanted to say thank you to your entire department and the mayor's office, but I think that deserves a round of applause for, because I'll tell you why. The power of those ratings, this is what, this is the little I do know about finance. The power of those strong ratings gives us the ability to borrow money at cheaper rates. Is that a fair statement? So keep up the good work, Michael, and to your staff. All right? Thank you.
That was the first shout out of the night. Any others?
I just have a clarification. Mike, did you say he said something eloquently? I've never, I've never witnessed that on Michael Smith. Okay. Never noticed it.
Any other shout outs?
Mr. Chairman.
Johnson.
Public, public service announcement from Smyrna. Town of Smyrna is conducting a 2025 special census. That's to update our population. Town gets $175 per person annually from state shared revenue. Per person. You don't have to be a homeowner. $175 per person, Smyrna will get back. All you have to do is fill out a short survey that keeps your taxes low and improves emergency services. Last census was in 2020. Home. Need everyone's help. Go online, look up ARC G.I.S. It's A-R-C-G-I-S Survey 123. ARC G.I.S. Survey 123. Can't do that, call the town clerk. That's Amber Hobbs, the town of Smyrna. She'd be glad to help you through, through the process. But have her firemen going door to door right now, trying to get people to, to census. Everyone should know it by now. People are scared that it's immigration, be used for immigration, going to come and serve a warrant on you or whatever. It's got nothing to do with any of that. Without revenue for the city of Smyrna, if you live in Smyrna, you cost Smyrna. You cost each one of us that pays taxes, especially people that rent. So please help us out and enjoy living in Smyrna and do your part with the 2025 census. Thank you.
Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to shout out my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, which was founded January 13th, 1913. This week was our 112th Founder's Day. And my local chapter, the Rutherford County Alumni Chapter, actually, in honor of our Founder's Day, stocked 47 blessing boxes across Rutherford County. So I want to salute the Rutherford County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta in their efforts to support and help the underserved in our county.
Congratulations. Thing else? Once again, it's been a pleasure lead this group, and I look forward to leading the commission into 2025 and remind everybody that this spring will be a super challenge for everyone. Budget request that is going to stagger your imaginations and also other requests that are going to be considered. So our committee structures will be stretched to the limit. Our budget will, committee will be stretched to the limit. Pay attention. Those of you that cannot attend planned Rutherford work session on 7th, on nine o'clock in the morning on the 27th. Other questions or comments? Once again, thank you for your participation tonight, your attendance, and with that, we are adjourned.